...funding this in that budget cycle. In October 6th of 2018, we approved the contract and government Mountain County Capital Fund. Since then, we've been working to refine some of our processes, establish the board, to make sure that we had representative representation. So just wanted to give you a heads up, August 6th, we'll be noticing a public hearing. We have a vote required of the board. We have additional funding requested of you, just a public hearing to allow the public to comment and ultimately release the funds that have already been budgeted. And it's important to get it. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Go ahead. All right, so you are a published list of items. So if any other items commissioners wish to chat about before we adjourn? All right, well, we will... Let me write mine down. Commissioner, what? Commissioner, write mine down. Green light. Is it on the agenda?
Not that I'm sure about.
Well, let's talk about that. I mean, you, we are gonna, I mean, if we vote to follow the agenda, then we will follow the agenda. So if it's something that's not on the agenda, I think what we've done in the past, who said, who said that, you know, commissioner could, when we get the public comment, could take, you know, three minutes to, you know, comment like any other citizen. So I think that's how we, I think that's how we've handled that in the past. But I do want us to follow the agenda once we vote to approve that, that there would be an opportunity at the end to, if you want to comment on it.
Should I have been on the comment? Or should I have commented on it? It should have been commented on all the time ago.
Well, if you want to propose to put something on the agenda, there is a process to do that. So just feel free to let us know that you'd like to do that.
Well, Mike, I'm Brownie. You called... Let's just do it here, okay?
Okay.
You called Chuck Edwards, tried to get him to kill the deal with AB Tech. Because he called me. You're gonna... There's three votes on that. And you and Dennis King called him, trying to get this deal killed.
Do you want me to explain what I did? I would be happy to explain to you what I did do.
You called him and asked him that you supported Dennis King getting rid of this deal. And what it's for is because that way, the new four that you have over there that you can control. Okay? That they can button on stuff and take this money that's been set aside, able to utilize like solar panels.
Well, what I, what I, what I did do is I was, I'm not gonna disagree with you, all right? The Chair of AB Tech trustees and the President of the school notified me that they had significant concerns about the language of the bill. And they asked that, they, they expressed to me that they would prefer for it not to be adopted this year. They'd like that a chance to look at the language some more. I think they would like to have the bill, but they were concerned about some of the languages. And they, and they asked me what my position was. I said, "Well, I'm just one person, but if, if AB Tech does not want this bill passed in its present form, I support what they want." And that's, and that's really...
You buttoned on me.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, all I said, all I said is, to the legislature, I support whatever AB Tech wants is what I want. And that's all I said.
And I've got a folder that high of where you told this gentleman what he needed to be done in his job. How about that? Nobody else, you know, if I get something from somebody upstairs, it's sending an email to all seven of the commissioners. Been done that way. But I've got a folder that thick that you and him have talked about and going through your friend over to the city of Asheville and everything. You are in a conflict of interest and everything as you drive it because you go out, throughout the country, throughout the country, and tell people how they can make this solar bill work. That's your job. Go talk to them, they pay you. I've got friends that sell solar farm, pay a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for these. He's got a lot of solar stuff. But now it's costing him every month because he has to pay, well, it ain't costing him today for the sunshine. So when it were bad, he ended up paying a big pair. There's the transform, which is the underground. The money's not there anymore, solar, there's nothing there anymore.
Mike, this issue comes up over and over. There's no conflict of interest here.
There what?
There's no conflict of interest here anymore than each of us has jobs, pursuits, outside numbers here.
There's one more out there since you don't wanna do that upstairs. Here we go upstairs and we give three cars to a nonprofit that I gotta play with it. Okay? Forget it. 'Cause I'm a war brat.
Okay.
Nonprofit.
Mike, Mike, this is a wonderful...
I couldn't figure out why anywhere would you carry something into us about cars? County given a nonprofit cars, just like...
Mike, that's not a conflict of interest either.
She's a volunteer, she's not a company.
And I know, I'm well educated in our conflict of interest obligations, as, as all of us need to be, as all of us need to be. And neither of the things you cited two are actual conflicts of interest. And I don't think are, I don't think that the words of this...
If this is a conflict of interest, frankly, Mike, I think it's yours because you actively bid on these cars to count and sell. So if there's anything that has a financial conflict of interest, it is you.
I bought one car, okay? At least I bought one. I didn't give the damn thing. Well, this... Well, I did give two away to the fire department.
Well, this board voted on it, and I know you don't agree with this, but it was a vote of this body, okay?
Vote of the body, what?
Of the county commission. Voted on it.
Well, you figure I have to get rid of me on that AB Tech deal that I worked so hard on. That was even, I know that, okay? I have no problems. But you do not need to be down here telling these people about running the energy deal. Somebody else needs to take that board over, like the guy sitting next to you or even one of the guys sitting next to you. Because you don't wanna give it up because you, that's your thing.
Well, I appreciate your perspective on that. I just agree with it, but I've got the right fix, right? Thank you. All right, anything else? All right. We're adjourned now.
I had a brother that's not a car.
This is Rebecca.
Yeah, she is, she is out of my program. And this is Courtney. She is a graduate of Friday. This is Jill Nero. She's one of my staff members also. This is Bryson. She's in the program.
You can just see that.
Never have. And southern states have.
It wasn't, it wasn't like that.
I don't know. I'll, I'll have to show you.
I'm sorry.
What did the outside say?
Well, they're supposed to be, you gotta give notice.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Are we ready to get started? All right, I think we are ready to begin. So Max, if you could start the introductory video, please. All right, good evening, commissioners. Are we ready to get started? All right, I think we are ready to begin. I'd like to call the July 16th, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and order us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the good God, who has taken us from America, and to the Republic for which He stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last county commission meeting, our nation has celebrated the Fourth of July Independence Holiday. So before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment of silence for reflection on, or silent prayer for, silent prayer of appreciation for the many blessings that we have to live in the United States of America. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right, we have a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes for folks who are attending the county commission meetings and workshops. So anyone who's attending this meeting who parked in the county parking facility next door or who use Asheville Transit to travel to the meeting can get a pass from security on your way out of the meeting. That is valid for today only. Please take a moment to sign it to your cell phone. And I'm going to read the ethics reminder for the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? All right, seeing none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening." I'd just like to make an announcement. Commissioner Amanda Edwards is on vacation with her family, so she will not be attending the meeting this evening. All right, before we, before we address the consent agenda, I'd like to ask our county manager to introduce the newest member of the county's management team.
Thank you, commissioners. It is my privilege to see them and to introduce Civil Tate. Civil Tate is our new Assistant County Manager. She joins us from Hurston County, where she served as the Assistant County Manager for seven years. And previously, she served in Chatham County as a Performance Manager and Community Development Specialist. So please join me in welcoming Civil Tate here to Buncombe County.
We're so glad to have you in Buncombe County. We all were to work with you. All right. Okay, we now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There was one thing I would hear. I know several years ago, it was something that was...
Can't hear you back here.
Turn on your mic.
Turn your mic on.
The overlook road. And several years ago, this had come to us and it was something we couldn't do, so...
Can we pull it, let's just pull that, pull that up for discussion. You wanna just do that? And you can answer, ask the questions in the mic. Just, now, or... Why don't we go ahead and just talk about right now for a second? That's more, because you've got a motion and a second to approve it, so let's just go ahead and chat about it, about this item and then...
This is the DOT process. So that's still listed as a state maintained road. And it's just a little short piece of two or three properties near Lake Julian. And they've just requested that the DOT drop it from the state maintained road system. And the statute just requires that the Board of Commissioners where the road's located to say, "We think it's fine."
So, so what's different, I think, is some of this, Commissioner Presley's a question, what's different in this and the one that we had? We had one out in Candler.
That's a question of whether or not the Boards of Commissioners in the state have authority to close a road.
Close a road?
Yeah, so that would be...
That's not what this is.
This is to drop a road from the state DOT maintained system. Closing a road would be to, cities do it all the time because they maintain roads. Counties don't accept or maintain roads. So that's the difference. So that's the difference. Okay. Different statute. Thanks. Second, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, that was a Candler. I thought it was at a daddy and also whenever we looked at it, right?
That was just a recorder plaque. It was a way that the O2 road, never a state maintained road.
Okay. If I get questioned though.
That is correct. Okay.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda and follow the remainder of the agenda as published. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up on the agenda is we have a proclamation. And Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar is going to present the item. Is there someone from the staff who will also be here receiving it? Okay, great. All right, stay with me.
It's an honor to read this proclamation on the topic of breastfeeding and to have staff and partners here in support of this as well. Whereas families are a priority in the county of Buncombe and part of helping them thrive is ensuring they receive community support to develop and sustain healthy lifestyles. Whereas according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, American Academy of Family Physicians, and other leading health organizations, breastfeeding is the optimal food for infants. And whereas a mother's decision to breastfeed her baby should be supported by her family and community. And whereas breastfeeding is associated with lower rates of childhood illness such as obesity, diabetes, and infectious diseases, as well as less maternal breast and ovarian cancers and diabetes, and a faster recovery from childbirth as compared to formula feeding. And whereas breastfeeding promotes maternal infant bonding and benefits the entire family and is associated with lifelong health and development. Whereas collaborating with healthcare providers and community resources can positively impact breastfeeding success. Whereas our community is proud to have a hospital, Mission Hospital, with baby-friendly hospital initiative designation. Whereas breastfeeding protects the environment, which will preserve the beauty of the mountains and the waterways. Whereas a breastfeeding-friendly community encourages families of all races and ethnicities to continue breastfeeding by providing a supportive and welcoming environment. Whereas recognizing the persistent inequities in our community's birth outcomes, where African-American babies in Buncombe County are nearly four times as likely to die in the first year of life as white babies. A breastfeeding-friendly community could be an antidote to tragedy and a strategy towards advancing equitable, equitable birth outcomes in Buncombe County. And whereas in his proclamation supporting the 2018 World Breastfeeding Week, the Governor of the State of North Carolina has recognized that in a world filled with inequality, crisis, and poverty, breastfeeding is the foundation of lifelong good health for babies and mothers. And whereas the World Alliance for Breastfeeding Action is dedicated to the protection, promotion, and support of breastfeeding worldwide through the annual international observance of World Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through 7th. Now therefore, on the day of July 16th, 2019, and henceforth, we, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, declare the county of Buncombe to be a breastfeeding, family-friendly community. Thank you so much. I'm honored to turn the mic over to Stoney Blevins, our Health and Human Services Director, to make some remarks about the work happening in the county. Thank you, Stoney.
Thank you, Jasmine and commissioners. We do appreciate your partnership and your support and our desire to make Buncombe County a breastfeeding-friendly community. As Jasmine said, really, if you think about it, the natural order of things would suggest that this is the best source of nutrition for infants. And we have long supported this in Buncombe County and HHS through our Women and Children's Nutrition Program, WIC. And so we do utilize peer support counselors so that there's a mother-to-mother connection for participants in our WIC program to encourage breastfeeding. But even with our efforts, as Jasmine said, there's certainly a disparity in our community in who breastfeeds and who does not. And just to highlight some of that, as of May 2019, 23% of our WIC infant participants exclusively breastfed. We want to expand that, that inequity in our community. 24% of our white WIC participants exclusively breastfeed compared to 17% of black WIC infants. 15% of WIC infants are partially breastfed compared to 13% of black infants. And 59% of WIC white infants are formula-fed compared to 72% of black WIC participating infants. As our purpose statement, HHS, is to strengthen our communities by advancing health, safety, and opportunity. And we believe giving children a strong, healthy start does allow them to have opportunities for the rest of their life. So this is just stage one, and I do want to recognize our friends from Partnership for Children. They're gonna help us with this project and do a lot of the community education. It's actually a 10-step process, at the end of which we hope to have a certification, an official certification as a breastfeeding-friendly community. And tonight, you have really kick-started us down the first part of that, so we thank you very much.
All right, Stoney and Jasmine, thank you so much for presenting this item. I appreciate it very much. Okay, the next item is a presentation on the 2019 City Gate Award with WC Rescue Ministries. Can you come out and tell us more about it? Thanks for being with us, Michael.
Well, thank you for having us. We are, we are so excited. You know, almost, almost three years ago, we were, we were here and, and to talk about the possibility of doing a treatment program to address the, the women that, that had an opioid problem in our area and, and the birth of those children and trying to come up with a solution. The community rallied around us and with the help, and with the help of Buncombe County, we were able to, to really serve. Once the program got off, off the ground in January of, of 2018, it was an innovative program. Nothing like it has been done around the country. And we've been able to serve over 40 women from Buncombe County. And on Friday, we will have our eighth graduation of this year. We have two ladies graduating there. But, but in January, I mean, in June, I was asked to, to come to California for a gathering of rescue missions, team challenge programs, Salvation Army's, HUD, Catholic Charities. There was over 1,200 of my peers who were in North America that was there. And we were awarded the City Gate Award. It's only the second time that this award's been given out to, to a rescue mission, and it's not given out annually. It's actually only given out when there's, when there's an innovative, a program that has brought forth. And we've had so much success with it. This is, this is Becky Turgey. She is our program director. And so I'll let her kind of talk about the award a little bit, because this is our award for our community. This is our award.
So this is such an honor and a privilege just to be a part of what's going on in our community and, and just to be able to work around with collaboratively. And I just wanted to take this time to just kind of read through the award for why it was given. But it's in the City Gate Award that's presented to Western Carolina Rescue Ministries, Asheville, North Carolina, for the insightful strategies, innovative services, collaborative initiatives, and an indestructible desire to make a difference for the cause of Christ in the heart of our city. So it's such an honor and a privilege just to be able to be a part of that and just to be able to be at a level of professionalism as well as recovery in order to make a difference in these moms' lives. So thank you very much for allowing us to share that.
I would like to share a video with you all.
Yeah, thank you.
The amount of women who are losing their children to substance abuse in Buncombe County is alarming. But what is even more alarming is that once separated, mother-child reunification is highly This is why Ava's House was formed. Ava's House is a program within Western Carolina Rescue Ministries that was created to help women and their children obtain the recovery they need from addiction. What makes Ava's House stand apart from the rest is that mom and baby may live together. This free residential program equips mothers with the tools they need to walk out a re-unified, recovered, and redeemed life. Ava's House tailors each day with classes that cover parenting skills, biblical studies, financial guidance, and so much more. Our hope is that upon graduation, each mother will have the skills they need to become an active member of society. Ava's House was created for a leader like me, a daughter like me, and a mother like me, to show how God can use any situation for His glory.
That video was actually produced by a high school student here from Buncombe County. We, we've served only Buncombe County. We've served only Buncombe County mothers and children, and it has been a phenomenal success. We have some of our ladies here tonight, but and we are, I am so grateful for the staff from the county and for you all and believing in us and trusting in us and helping us to save lives. We are seeing so many moms be able to reunify. They are, it's working. And it is, it's an exciting thing to be a part of something where we're seeing lives changed on a daily basis. And so thank you. This is our award. It really is. I'm hearing from people from all over the country. I'm actually going and consulting with other areas because they want to produce this in their area. And thank you all for taking a chance with us and believing in us. And so thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let's go back to you for being here and for this positive update. Our commission did identify the opioid crisis as one of the strategic priorities for the county and something that is one of the toughest issues we face. And we know there's not any one solution, but we're happy to work with partners who are really taking that issue down and really trying to make a difference, especially for families and kids. So thank you all for your great work.
Chairman, I just want to say I've had the opportunity to go there a couple of times. I distinctly remember the first time I went there and toured the facility, and it was an emotional experience for me to go in and see the care that had went into those rooms and the love that had went into those rooms. And I mean, you felt it when you walked in the door, so we're very grateful for the success. It'll change generations. We appreciate it.
We do not have any public hearings this evening, so next item is our county manager's report.
No report, it's not.
All right. It's easy. And we also do not have any old business items to address, so we come to new business. The first item is we need to designate a voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting. They will have their annual meeting next month in Guilford County.
So I've had the opportunity to do this before, and it's a great experience. I've been, actually, a few years, and I understand, Brownie, that you would like to go this year, and I certainly don't have the problem in making the review as the vote.
I second.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. So there's a motion in the second to nominate Brownie Newman to be our voting delegate at the County Commissioner's Association meeting in Guilford County next month. Any other discussion? And if any other commissioners are interested in going, it's a great event, and you learn a lot about what county governments are doing across the state. So if anybody else is interested in going, of course, it's open to everyone. Any public common motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. All right. Next up is a commercial donation to benefit new mothers, and Stoney Blevins is going to be back with us to present this item.
This is my night, isn't it?
Shoot, it's all about, it's all about you.
I'm happy to announce that we've been offered a commercial donation, and really what great timing on the night when we had that proclamation, by Airflow, which is a business down in Arden. And they're willing to donate 100 commercial breast pumps that we can then turn around and give to low-income mothers that we're working with that would allow them to continue breastfeeding. And when I think about this situation, I mean, this is just one of many, but just imagine you're a 20-year-old mother and you're working, you know, from 5:00 in the evening to 1:00 in the morning at a restaurant, so you can pay $900 for a one-bedroom apartment. And but you still want to breastfeed your child because you do believe those things we said, that it's better for your health, it's better for bonding, it's better for your baby. But you don't have $195 to spend on a breast pump. So through this generosity of Airflow, we will have breast pumps that we can give for free. And like I said, we even have the peer mentoring, the one-on-one mentoring with a mother that can help you understand how to use it. So we would respectfully ask that the county accept this donation, and we certainly have, from a fiscal perspective, we have audit control environments where we can control the inventory and track every pump back to the individual who received it. Or the company's okay if we give it to another nonprofit like Avipa or MAHEC or someone else who might have a patient who needs it.
So I just got one, I've got one question. So is there a typo in the letter? It says there $195? Because you've got, we've got it in here, 100 valued at $19,485.
That's all 100, so that will be the total amount.
Is that, is that tough? So my math is horrible tonight. Okay, I got all on it. I'm fine with it.
As a very motion to approve the acceptance of this donation.
So.
I'm going to the public commissioner's condo motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. That's great, and we send our appreciation for this to this great neighborhood community. Appreciate it very much. Okay. And the next item in our new business is an update on House Bill 370. And Commissioner Jasmine B. Ferrara will present this item. There's not any vote to be taken on this. This is simply for discussion purposes. And I want to acknowledge that Sheriff Quentin Miller with us here this evening. So Sheriff, thank you for being with us and for all your great work of you and thanks on your team. Commissioner?
Sure. This is sort of to provide some background and context. Periodically, there's a bill under consideration at the North Carolina General Assembly that has particular implications in Buncombe County for one reason or another, and HP 370 is one such bill. So this will be just a discussion to provide a bit of background and context and to share an update about a letter that four members of commission, myself, Chairman Newman, Commissioners Whitesides, and Edward sent to Governor Cooper, as well as leadership of the General Assembly, expressing opposition to HP 370. The story begins in some ways back in February of this year when the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office announced a new policy that the office would no longer honor ICE detainers due to concerns that those detainers violate due process and were requiring people be held beyond the length of stay required by court order. And additionally, due to concerns about the ways in which a policy of complying with ICE detainers chilled the relationship between immigrants in Buncombe County and law enforcement and created barriers to people feeling that they could safely call law enforcement in times of crisis and need. So that local policy was set in place under the direction of Sheriff Quentin Miller. Buncombe County was one of seven counties, the seven largest counties in the state of North Carolina, to put such policies in place at the local level under the authority of the local sheriff's office. The situation we find ourselves in now is that there is a bill titled HP 370 that was introduced at the state legislature in a retaliatory manner to basically undermine the local policies that have been set in these seven counties and to mandate that sheriffs in all North Carolina counties comply with ICE detainers. I oppose this law and put an invitation on the table to anyone in commission to join me in sending letters because it is actively under deliberation in Raleigh right now. It has not yet passed into law. The status of the bill is it passed both chambers, but it's currently sitting in the Rules Committee of the House because the Senate version that passed was slightly amended. If it is to pass through this committee and find its way to the governor's desk, there's a pledge veto of it, which would bounce it back to the legislature. I want to speak briefly about why, some of the reasons that I oppose HP 370. And they start and end with the primary reason that I'm sitting here at all, which is to represent people who live in Buncombe County and to represent and serve the interests of people who live in Buncombe County. And anytime members of our community are being targeted by a law, I think it's important to speak up about that. And I have grave concerns that HP 370 is unconstitutional, that it targets immigrant communities here in Buncombe County and across North Carolina, and that it also undermines the authority of duly-elected sheriffs to do their jobs and to set policies that protect and maintain the public safety of the communities that are elected to serve. So that's a bit of context, a bit of my perspective as an individual commissioner. Anyone who's interested can find copies of those letters linked to through our agenda.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other rooms of the commission you wish to speak on this item?
All right. If they can, they can.
So I would like to bring a couple of comments.
Here you go.
Let me turn it on. I would like to make a couple of comments. One is that, which I was glad and supported that, I think, Chairman, it was when you become chair that we, it wasn't a written policy, but we did not, a lot of people were coming to us wanting us to be resolutions directed towards the state or directed towards federal issues, and that we had decided that we were not going to do that. And I know that this falls short of a resolution. However, the conversation is similar. The conversation allows us to bring a state or national vote for law and to take our personal position on that. When I was sworn in as a commissioner, I was sworn in to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and I swore to uphold the Constitution of North Carolina. And that includes everybody. That includes all the people who live in Buncombe County, and I intend to do that. I do, I do appreciate where this conversation is coming from. Yet I think it's as similar to doing a resolution, and so I think there's a better way for us to handle this. Because when you do it, when you do a letter, even though you have two or three people signing, the letterhead that we have has everybody, and so it appears to be a board decision. And I support, just, I mean, people can't view our hearts, but this entire board reaches out to our Hispanic friends, our Hispanic community, and loves them and supports them dearly, and that doesn't, that's not going to change, this discussion's not going to change any of that with us individually. However, I think that we have to be really careful when we're doing a letter that has an entire board than we have one or two. I don't even think I can do a letter by myself that has all the board representatives talk. I think we have to be careful, we have to be careful of that. So, and that's, that's the reason I chose not to sign the document. I don't want to get into, you know, partisan ship or whether people agree or disagree with the state of North Carolina. The state of North Carolina is, I think, is it, I get them confused sometimes. Deal and rule? Are we deal and rule at Homewood? Well, not a little one or the other. We don't want to debate, we don't want to debate that. But technically, we're a deal and rule state, which means that the state makes the rules. And so we elect the state legislatures, and we have to, whether we agree with them or not, as an elected official personally. This has nothing to do with sheriff's, to do with me. That is, it is my obligation to support that. But I do support where you guys are coming from, why you feel the way you feel. I understand that, and I respect your right to be able to have that, have that discussion. But when I made that oath, it was to uphold the laws of the state of North Carolina. And, but anyhow, I'm talking a little bit naturally. I guess that's why we want to have the conversation. But one of the things I want to make sure of tonight is that this is not one of those conversations where this board is divided and creates some sort of divide between the board, because I know where each board member stands in their heart. I just want to make sure that that's very clear tonight, and that's not the purpose of the conversation, and that's what resolutions tend to do, so we have to be very careful with that. I'm sure.
Ready for a little speaking, Mr.?
Yeah, I've done some background research, and, you know, I've got a little thing here, and I can make it where everyone can have it, and I'd like to read it. "After each of us was elected to this board, the first thing we did was raise our hand and take an oath, an oath of office between God and the good people of Buncombe County. When we said those words, we were promising to do two things: uphold the law of both the United States and the state of North Carolina, and to perform the duties that comes with being a county commissioner. Where I come from, keeping your word means everything. And when I took that oath, I was giving my word not to those who voted for me, but everyone in Buncombe County who has honored to serve. I made them that promise. We all did. Now I understand that good people, including my colleagues here, can have an honest disagreement about how to handle things, especially on hot-topic issues like illegal immigration. And as far as the specific concerns raised by my colleagues of the majority regarding House Bill 370, they may even have some valid points, but under our system, there is a right way to do things. It is often said that we are a nation of law. What that means is to me is that as citizens, we don't get to choose which law we will follow and which law we will break. And as elected representatives of the people, we're required to govern according to the Constitution as set by law. Now, we as a board are temporarily elected officials of the seat we hold on behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County. And while I appreciate my colleagues' social justice activism as a way to change things, I don't believe we should allow that activism to get in the way and promise that we made to the citizens we were sent, who sent us here. I'm a simple guy, and this is a simple matter for me. I made a promise, and I intend to keep it."
And I'll speak, sir. One is, I don't think this is a law yet, right? And one of the things, and I agree with where my colleagues are coming from, but you know, in America, we do have the right to express our opinion, and that's what a democracy is about, folks. And that's what we're doing here. And I don't think that's wrong. And the people who elected me, they know what I stand for and what I've stood for for all my life, and I'm not going to change now. And I feel that I'm representing the people of my district and Buncombe County. And when our sheriff was elected, 62% of the vote that he got in the election, and he told the people that what he was going to do. And not to mention, I don't think we've gone along with ICE before. This is not something that just started in Buncombe County. I don't think the previous sheriff, you know, signed that. But as far as the commission, sure, I'm not, you know, we're going to disagree, and I agree. But I think we are exercising our fiduciary responsibility in speaking up because a lot of the people in my district are supporting it, and, you know, I hear from them about it. And, you know, I don't see anything wrong with it, and I'd be willing to sign the letter in the future if we have something that I don't think is right. And it really concerns me now, not only as a commissioner, but as a citizen of America. Where is our moral compass, folks? We've gotten to the point that we don't give a darn anymore about people. I can remember at one time, we were, you know, policing the world for people's human rights. Now we don't give a darn about citizens' rights, let alone anybody else. But we're losing track of our moral compass. And, you know, when I hear us talk about what a religious community we are in America, folks, we don't practice what we preach, and it's obvious to me. And especially in churches, and I'm very critical of this, and I've always been, still, the most segregated hour in the week is 11 o'clock Sunday morning. But I still... But I still think what we did is right, and I will do it again, you know, if it's a law that I see that I don't think is fair. And when you start arresting people or picking them up without due process, even if they are not citizens, they're in the United States of America, and we follow laws here, and we should do that. This reminds me of the Jim Crow period that I teamed up with when I was a kid. Heaven forbid we go back then.
I'd like to follow up just, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, and I think it raises some important issues about what is the responsibility of a county commission when you have a moment where local policy and state law seem to be on a collision course? It's long been said that North Carolina is a Dillon's law state, but there's actually diverging legal opinions on that and diverging jurisprudence on that. So I think we ought not rest necessarily on that analysis in a, in a simple way in every instance. But this is a particularly important one, and I think it's important for people in Buckham County to know what's happening. Federal law is actually neutral on this topic and says it is at the discretion of sheriffs about whether to comply with ICE detainers, so they point to the local authority on this. Our sheriff's office is tasked with a very difficult legal, moral, fiduciary responsibility of maintaining the detention center, and has made the decision that holding people without court order not only violates due process, but is not in the committee's interest or our public safety's interest. To me, that's exactly the kind of moment when it's appropriate for a county commission to add our voice to the course of elected officials across the state who are wrestling with this topic and trying to figure out the direction that makes the most sense. And this is an instance where I feel like respecting the, respecting the will of our community, which clearly voted in a sheriff who campaigned on exactly issues like this, and who has used his discretion to make this assessment as critical, as have six of the other largest counties in North Carolina that are contending with this issue in the most front lines way. And as has been pointed out, this is not a law. It's a law under debate at the North Carolina General Assembly. So citing to the oath we took to uphold the federal and state constitution actually points us, if anything, to federal law, which is neutral on this topic. So if we're going to cite to our oath in this moment, it would point us to a federal law saying it's at the discretion of the sheriff. And in doubt, I am going to look to the oath to the federal constitution. So there's a lot of ways we can talk about this. I think it's good for us to have these discussions, and there are going to be times when what's happening in Raleigh has direct and immediate implications in particular ways in Buckham County. And I will always land on the side of us, it being better for us to shine a light on those topics, to discuss them. If there are those among us who feel compelled to act through resolution or letter or public statement, I think that's important. And what I think of first and foremost is people who live in District One and other parts of the county who have reached out to me to talk about how policies related to immigration and the way those policies play out in our local community impact themselves every day, their families, their children, their ability to participate fully in the life of our community, whether that means showing up for school, or what happens if they have an interaction with the criminal justice system. So, a bit more about why I landed where I'm landing, but also a bit more, I think, that's important for us to keep in mind as we have these important discussions about the intersections of local, state, and federal law, policy, process, and procedure.
All right. All right, if there's any other ones for, for Chairman's comments on this, I'll just, you know, I will, we don't have a formal policy on the adoption of resolutions regarding, you know, for state and federal issues. We have, I think, a sort of just a past practice that we don't adopt resolutions on issues that unless they are a local bill that's unique to Buckham County. I think this is, would definitely be impactful in Buckham County. I don't know, it's almost kind of a little bit of a gray area. We're one of only a handful of counties that would be directly impacted, but it's not in literal form a little bit. So I certainly think it's important that we be primarily focused on our county responsibilities, but there are these times when issues come up that have a lot of importance. And so I really appreciate folks sharing their perspective on it.
Yeah, I do too. The only thing that, you know, to me, if we're going to, if we're going to do a letter, and somebody wants to do a letter, then they ought just do a letter. We don't need to do a letter from the entire board. And there's just, you know, it's not whether we agree or disagree on what Raleigh's going to do or not going to do, it's just, to me, just the, we just have to be very careful in, like what I would choose to do a letter on. But I think everybody spoke, you know, pretty good.
And my hope would be that, I mean, my hope would be that we continue to practice of not adopting resolutions, because I think that would invite spending too much time on this, but a letter is a nice way where the folks who want to express their views can do so without, you know, without, and other folks who want to remain silent on it, or maybe write a letter saying, I'm on the other side of this issue. You know, everyone can just kind of, can use their own, sure. And then Sheriff Muller, if you'd like to, he'd be happy to, happy to hear from you as well.
Yes, sir. So first, let me thank you guys for even considering this conversation, even considering the letter. But let me be absolutely clear that everyone must look at a couple of things for me tonight. First of all, as has been stated, the previous sheriff basically did not support the 287 G. And I've come out, and I said that I would not support the detainer, part of that. I just want to be clear that for me, this is even more, because this hasn't become an issue until the seven minority sheriffs in the state of North Carolina were elected. Then there became this issue that someone would lead to believe that if we are not following the Constitution, we're not following our oath, and if that was the case, why do we need a new law? I'm telling you that it's always been the sheriff's discretion to make this decision. We've made our decision, and now, you know, we speak about sixty-two percent of people in Buckham County that elected me. I ran on the campaign, the campaign ran on the fact that I would not support 287. I've been very clear about that. I'm not going to back out from what I stated before, because I do support what the people who put me in office, and they knew from the beginning. So as we move forward, and we start to mark the 287, I just want to be clear that I'm not, you know, not doing my oath of office. I am doing that. I'm not breaking the Constitution. I am following the Constitution, and if you look at what I've said, is that I would honor the detainer if they give us a valid warrant. So the problem I'm having is that it's not a valid warrant. We're holding people, we're being asked to hold people after they went through the due process. Once due process happens, they're free to go. And now ICE is asking us to hold them beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Ferr. All right. All right, well, again, thank you all for a good discussion. All right, that concludes our new business. We do not have any board appointments to consider this evening, so we come to public comment. Any members concerned with? We do not have a need for a closed session this evening. No. Okay. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave your question, your name, oh, excuse me, along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the public's chance to speak, to speak to the commission. And the board reserves the right to deny public address on topics that we already had public comment on specifically earlier in the same meeting. All right, who would like to start us off? Mr. Yalta, you can go first, and then we'll come to you next.
First and foremost, let me say I don't have any animosity toward anybody who's trying to work and make themselves better, and I don't have any intention to look at somebody differently because they're black or brown. And I've even got homosexuals as a friend, and that may shock the crap out of some of you, but that's the fact. I judge people by people. But I do look for consistency, and when I see this letter, I see a party that represents non-citizens over citizens. As we talk about all these elections, that wasn't the majority of the people, and we are not a democracy, we are a democratic republic where we let people represent us. I also see a party that doesn't want photo ID at elections. I also see a party that uses kids to get more money, but then they turn around and support destroying a mass of living cells that has limb buds and a beating heart, and they call it a personal Schultz. And we just talked about those kids tonight and how valuable they are. So those of you that are here, hear my words, let them burn in your heart. We also see a party that pushes letting a man go to a bathroom with a little girl, and our current governor, Cooper, is considering reintroducing that bill. We also see if that bill goes in, then we will have to either build, or we will let girls go to boys' dressing rooms when they decide what sex they want to be. These are the things that I see. So I see a party, yeah, I do, that does not support life, nor the rule of law. And I heard today that these mass migrations are not self-funded, there's people funding them, and guess who is funding a lot of them? The drug lords getting drugs into America. So our opium that we talked about tonight and all of our drugs, where's the large majority of them coming from? Because I see a party that doesn't want to have borders. Folks, I'm not against anybody, but we as a nation must have borders, and we must have laws, and we must arrest those that do have warrants for them, period, or have defied the judge's orders. And I may be standing alone, but those of you that have a Bible or believe in God's Word better wake up, because I see we're right to wrong, it wrongs right, and yes, morals are out the window. Matter of fact, what's the motto for action? Any way you like it. We don't have any morals, folks, period.
In fact, you just have a moment to regroup and compose yourself after the discussions that were had previously by the commission and by Mr. Yelson. Please. Mary Standard, Montreat, North Carolina. On June seventeenth, twenty nineteen, I was disenfranchised. In fact, every citizen on Montreat, Black Mountain, and Biltmore Forest lost their right to vote. How and why? Members of the sitting town councils voted to cancel the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one municipal elections and give themselves the incumbents an active unelected year in office. The stated objective was to change to the even year's election cycle. This is a policy issue, which I am not addressing. However, the cancellation of elections is a voting rights issue, which I am addressing. The change to the even year could have easily been accomplished by having elections in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one for a one- or three-year term without canceling the elections. Senator Edwards, who does not represent any of these three towns, sponsored bills to change the election cycle and grant the incumbents a fifth year in office. The rules were ratified by General Assembly on June seventeenth, less than three weeks before the July fifth filing date for candidates. Edwards, Van Dyne, Agar, and Turner all voted in favor of these bills. You are the officials responsible for the Buckham County Board of Elections budget and ensuring their ability to successfully conduct the election process. How can they do their job when politicians cancel elections three weeks before the filing dates? How can citizens be expected to have faith in the voting process when their right to vote and to file as candidates are canceled with three weeks notices? I ask you tonight, perhaps tonight is not the right one for that, to, yes, prepare a resolution unanimously and in a bipartisan way, and vote in September. This resolution, hopefully prepared by you, would affirm the right to vote for one's own representatives, affirm the certitude of elections, and three, disavow disenfranchisement and the cancellation of elections by sitting incumbents. Disenfranchisement can never be justified and can never be rationalized. I ask you to consider this carefully. This should be an issue that unites each of you. The right to vote should not be taken lightly. Even though this law was indeed inactive with bipartisan support by the General Assembly, other laws in the past, literary tests, poll taxes, the right to deny women to vote, they were enacted, this should be addressed.
Thank you very much. Michael.
My name is Michael Harney. I work at the Western North Carolina AIDS Project, and I teach at AB Tech and at New York Community Colleges. I failed to be around to update you on things for the last several months, because I've been teaching on Tuesday nights, and so we're in between semesters right now. Glad to be back and see you all. I'm sorry to miss being able to introduce myself to Commissioner Edwards. So just a quick update, I'm the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville. We are still going through between forty and fifty thousand needles every single month out of the office of the Western North Carolina AIDS Project. People are still coming from over twenty to twenty-five different counties and several states in our region, and so it is still a major issue that I feel is not necessarily the obligation of the Western North Carolina AIDS Project to continue to fund. I am looking forward to the Buckham County Department of Health and Human Services providing access to syringe service programs. We're hoping, if not now July, maybe August. But this is the twenty-fifth year anniversary of the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville. We started in nineteen ninety-four. Back then, I've said before in front of you that we exchanged maybe a thousand needles in a whole year and thought we were pretty hot about it, but going through over half a million needles every year is way out of control. So there are a lot of issues. I'm so happy to hear about what's going on at the Western Carolina Rescue Mission, how they're addressing the issues for opioid users. We are all drug users by note. I've said it before, that some of us can drink coffee in the morning and can't even talk to you until you've had coffee. I like mine at night. So we each choose to do different things to do with our bodies, whether we ingest things or use things, that sort of thing. So I just want to update you and let you know that we're still operating. I hope that Commissioners and Chairman Newman, if you're in Guilford County, that maybe speaking to other county commissioners to bring up the subject, to see that every county health department across the state, there are eighty-five such locations, become those one sites per county to operate needle exchange service programs. If other programs want to be enacted, that's great as well, all in support. I want to transition, though, to something secondary, kind of harm reduction related. I heard on the NPR radio station, and I have been reading in the Mountain Express about the Energy Innovation Task Force, and I see that goal number two says here at the website, it is about the transition for Western North Carolina to a cleaner, affordable, and smarter energy future through community engagement, collaboration, et cetera. I really hope that we can look at ways that as we give permits to new buildings and all this construction, whether it's hotels or schools, that we find a way to put solar panels on each of those buildings. I think every Walmart should have it, every store, major mall, all these settings need to have these solar panels. It might be able to draw down a little bit of the use that we have and bring some energy resources that are not fossil fuels. I've said it before in front of you, I just reiterate it again. I hope that we're looking at ways to be innovative. I'm not all about fracking, I'm not all about coal, although I know that obviously we need fossil fuels, and we're not going to get rid of them. I'm a realist about this after all these years, but I do think we have an obligation as we are building new buildings to do that. Thank you.
Michael, thank you so much. All right, any other members of the board? Yes, ma'am. And who else? Chair, you can go next. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Monica Kreis from Seek Healing Program Assistant. So this is the first time I've ever stood before you, it's actually a pre-planned speech set out, and I'm going to speak from my heart, and I'm going to go against it and not go with my pre-planned speech. November of two thousand and seventeen, I stood before you for the first time after meeting Mr. Belcher in Cantler Church, and he invited me here to speak passionately to my Commissioners and ask for help. Since then, my dreams have been coming true. I had a dream to quote Martin Luther King Jr., and through the guidance of the county Commissioners and my community, they're coming true. I have the privilege and honor through Seek Healing to help spearhead the overdose awareness day for accounting, and that's why I'm here for you today. You've helped me so much in these journeys. So many things are coming true, and I don't want to let my community down. I don't want to let my team down. This is the first big project I've ever done, and our county deserves something great, something huge, so we can remember the people that we lost to overdose. something huge, so we can remember the people that we lost to the, to overdose. So on August thirty-first, Saturday, from two to eight thirty in Carrier Park, we'll be having an overdose awareness day. Our hopes and dreams is to have at least trees dedicated in memory to those that we've lost. Our high hopes is to have an actual whole greenway dedicated so we have a place that we can go and sit and grieve if we need to, to remember those that are gone. I stand before you today to ask on behalf of myself, my team, uh, my work, and just the community, to please help. Um, I'm hitting roadblock after roadblock, and Mr. Miller, our sheriff, actually directed me here today to you and has faith that through our county commissioners, we can obtain bigger things. Also, I am here to request speakers as well, because I've not personally been able to reach out due to hospitalization. But, uh, Ms. Jasmine, as well as Mr. Whiteside, we would love to have you on that day to come and speak and just educate our community, help spread awareness of what the day is really about. We've really, really enjoyed the company that you gave us last year, Ms. Jasmine, and, and we would love to have that again this year. And then, uh, oh, one minute, I'm getting really good at this timing thing. Okay. One minute left, so I've got a minute to talk about fundraising and the funding. We are nonprofit. Nonprofit, in my eyes, we have no money. So I've been really good at that, having no money my whole life. So we need money in order to, uh, keep our program going with Seek Healing, but also more directly with overdose awareness day. We have big dreams and big plans for this, but unfortunately, the world still revolves around money as much as I do. So if there are any donors, sponsorships, we, we do have packages available for private or organization funding to come through to us. I have flyers for you, anything that you would like. Be more than happy to address anything that I can, but we just appreciate you, your time, and hopefully you should have a mission.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. And, um, if there's something that the staff might be able to help with, if there's permitting or whatever this specific assistance is, then, uh, stick around, and we'll try to chat them in after the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Play the public access TV two with the donation button on it.
All right, uh, Mr. Rice. Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Well, I want to thank the county manager for getting the cleanup out here in the hall and get that desk out of the room so we could move around more freely in case of a fire. I told him the fire marshal didn't have more sense, and she had the better sense than he did. So I give her credit for that much, or whoever directed her to do it, thank you. Uh, TV, uh, uh, excuse me. The letter that you were talking about writing tonight, you say you didn't take a vote on it. Well, you had to take a vote for four people to sign a letter. And you're all elected, and you put it on your letterhead. So somebody's lying when they say they don't take a vote on it. You did it in the back room? Shame on you. Do it out of your property and vote on it. Now, if you can't be trusted with a little thing, what can you be trusted with bigger things? When you made this policy, and you thanked me for coming forward and talking to you about TV thirteen and the meeting and how to stand over here and all this, you guys all went for that policy and come up with one, didn't you? Resolution and all. If you cannot honor that policy as small as that is, what can we trust you with any further? They stood right here tonight for almost thirty minutes when your policy says ten for the whole meeting. Yes, you can't be factual with one little policy. I don't know what you're gonna trust with this ICE program. You know, our country's in a foul shape. We need laws. If this is unconstitutional, it needs to be took to the Supreme Court, not here at Buncombe County. We don't make laws, we uphold laws. We need to do something. These people coming in here illegally, they should be detained. We don't need a sheriff here that can't lead. We need one, we got one that follows. We got six of them that follow us here in North Carolina. They follow, they're not leader. You know, the law was here a lot quicker and sooner than these new sheriffs. These new sheriffs is new kids on the block. They might have been in law enforcement, but they're still new kids for what's going on in our county. We need leaders, not followers, as well as commissioners. Leaders and not followers. You gotta stand for something or fall for anything. So what are you gonna do? Thank you.
We have just a couple of announcements, which I have put somewhere. All right, on July twenty-ninth at one P M., the county commission will hold a strategic planning workshop. And we, we didn't have a location on that yet, do we? We haven't decided where we're gonna be located. Um, okay, so stay tuned for the location. It'll be somewhere, uh, here in Buncombe County. I'm not sure, um, comfortable to do some old conversations. Okay, um, July thirtieth at eight thirty A M. The next day, we'll have a follow-up on that strategic planning workshop on July thirtieth at, I'm sorry, two, the department heads are meeting on the thirtieth at eight thirty A M. So the, the county staff will meet that morning at eight thirty. The county commissioners will reconvene at one o'clock on July thirtieth to conclude the strategic planning workshop with the department heads. On August sixth, at, at noon, the county commissioners will hold a pre-meeting at two hundred College Street on the first floor conference room at two hundred College Street in downtown. And then that evening, at five P M., will be the next county commissioners' regular meeting at two hundred College Street. Uh, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you all for being with us this evening for a journey.